Please rise for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One call?
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassner?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trekis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
I move for approval of adjournment of the meeting of June 19th, 2018.
All in favor of approval of the journal? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, and road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one, 3rd District. Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Planning Department, and the County Counselor, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receive, file, and ask that the matter be held in the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th District.
Receive, file, and change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, 3rd and 7th Districts. Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number five, 7th Districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number six, 6th Districts.
I'm sorry. Receive and file. And refer the council as committee of the whole.
So ordered.
Item number seven, 6th Districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight, 4th Districts.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number nine, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th Districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for items 11 and 12, and that will be the orders.
Item number 13, 5th Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 5th Districts.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $3,737,447.9 cents be approved and awarded to NB West Contracting Company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended. And authorization for revisions to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, 6th Districts.
Receive, file, contract in amount not to exceed $1,318,668.3 cents be approved and awarded to JM Marshoots Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended. And authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 16, 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 17, 3rd Districts. Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 18, 3rd and 6th Districts. Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 1, 2nd Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 3, and that will be the order. Report to the county executive. Report to special committees. I, Committee of the Whole. Receive, file, adopt the report as submitted, including the committee's recommendation as follows: The St. Louis County Council Committee of the Whole having heard and considered testimony and information received at its hearing held on June 19th, 2018 at 5:00 p.m. concerning the petition for removal of board members of the Wheaton-Cook-Lindhurst Light Maintenance District, based on the record as a whole, determines that good cause having been shown, recommends to the County Council in accordance with RSMO 235.120 that Matthew McClanskey and Peggy Sue McClanskey be removed as directors of the Wheaton-Cook-Lindhurst Light Maintenance District, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries. Committee of the Whole. Item number two, receive, file, adopt the report as submitted, including the committee's recommendation as follows: The council as a committee of the whole, having held a duly noticed public hearing on June 19th, 2018 at 5:00 p.m., to herein consider comments and information concerning Lynn Cullen Neighborhood Improvement District project and the preliminary assessment, and having considered all the testimony and information presented to the committee and finding that the plan specifications for the project are complete, committee recommends to the County Council that it enter an order, the plans and specifications for the project are complete, and further orders the improvements therein be made, and legislation be prepared approving permanent financing for the project, including reimbursement to the Federal Urban Trust Fund, and payment of any remaining cost of the project, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public forum.
We have 11 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. When we call your name, please come to the podium, adjust the microphone so we can be sure and capture your comments, try and keep your comments to three minutes, and give us your name and address for the record. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Izora Liggins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here last week, and my name is Izora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda. And I was here last week, and I was talking about my problems I'm having with prosecuting attorney's office due process. And I just want to let the chairman's man run back-to-back on April 3rd of 2018 when we were at the meeting, and you told me that you were willing to sit down and help me brainstorm to find a solution to this problem. And yet, you have never made time yet for that type of meeting, for me and you to sit down and brainstorm, because I'm sure there is a solution to what's going on. And number two, when I was here last week, I had asked that Mr. Crane, your counsel, look and just come back and let us know, let me know what protection am I do in St. Louis County as a homeowner and a taxpayer. So I don't know if he's been able to do that, or I don't know if you have time yet to sit down with me so we could brainstorm.
No, Izora, my office has been in contact with you, and I've read the final dispensation of your case, and there's no way that I can intervene with the court and have your judgment reversed. And there's just nothing, you need an attorney to manage that, to have your case reopened. I understand that you want to pursue a civil complaint, and that is, you know, up to the prosecuting attorney or your private attorney to pursue that.
And that's what I'm saying, Chairman Page, you keep sidetracking what I'm doing here. And I'm not here talking about a case, again, that illegal restraining order that Boeing brought against me, which was frivolous, but again, when they have the power to control the judges and the courts, see, that's the purpose for us having to brainstorm, because now with the Supreme Court issuing the new committee and commission to look at our courts, are you familiar with that? So we have ongoing problems, so you're telling me to go into an institution that we know is biased. So that's what I'm asking you. You keep telling me that it's a case, there is no case. I'm not talking about a case.
I'll be glad to provide you with a copy of the order that we have.
Order regarding what?
The final dispensation of your case.
What case?
I'll give you a copy of it.
So again, you don't have any information, and you're misleading the people here, and that's wrong, Chairman Page. It's really wrong. And for people to sit here and not act like my life matters, or my husband, or my children, and I came to you asking for help, since I've came before you, Boeing has created more havoc and confusion in my life.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Nobody's doing anything about that.
I actually think there is a meeting that addresses your concerns with prosecuting attorney, and someone will be getting back to you about that, but that's not a meeting that I'm participating in. But there are several folks trying to figure out how to help you, but there really, unfortunately, aren't a lot of options other than reopening your case with an attorney.
So there is no constitutional protections out here. I mean, we're not even talking about a case, we're talking about the process, and that's what I keep telling you. We can't get anywhere if we're not extending the process.
Izora, I understand your concerns. I understand your concerns, and a lot of us have spent some time looking into this. And my opinion after reading your judgment is that you cannot reopen that judgment without the help of an attorney. And as for the restraining order that Boeing has, I don't have any information about that, and I don't know how I could possibly intervene in a restraining order.
Well, that's the only thing you're talking about, there is no other case.
Okay. I'll provide you a copy of the information that I have.
I appreciate it. I mean, this is the third week you say you're going to provide.
I understand, it's frustrating.
Thank you.
Right.
Next speaker is Tim Day.
I'm Tim Day. I live at 7329 Nottingham Avenue, 63119. I'm here to talk about Tower T. Show of hands, how many on the council have used the driving range specifically at Tower T?
Love it.
I would say you have 10 days, I think, until it's possibly going to shut down. I would recommend everyone go there and just hit a small bucket and see, not just the natural beauty that will be lost, but the collection of people that use that facility every day. This place brings together old, young, black, white, men, women, the most casual players and the players that play every day. Everyone comes here to Tower T, and it's just a place to escape all of the problems of your world and just have this solace. It's the only surviving public driving range south of 40 inside of 270. It's zoned for golf, tennis, or bowling. It's not in the resident's best interest to rezone it for residential. It's just not. We would be losing the only driving range we have, and there's no practical place that another one could crop up now that the area is so densely developed. I know that there's powerful lobbying interests that want this project to go through, but we have zoning laws for a reason, and we have elected officials for a reason, and it's to represent the interests of the people and the residents, and our best interests are to keep this land zoned for recreation, and I know there's a landowner that wants to get out of it if we need to bridge corporate money, public money, private donations, whatever we need to do, we need to figure it out and save this for my kids and my kids' kids. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Berry.
Good evening, excuse me, Kevin Berry, 6500 Higgy Road, Afton. I'm here to talk about Tower T also. But I will say before I start, a couple weeks ago, I inquired into what salaries you guys make, commission are paid, and I found out you make less than half of what I did as a part-time school bus driver in San Diego. And I was shocked to see that such a large county has such part-time, underpaid employees in such an important position, because you guys really are public servants, and I want to thank you for your time. I thought you'd made some big salary, I was really wrong. I've been looking into studies about the health of residents living near railroad tracks, and I found some very recent studies. First one I found is by Mayo Clinic, and that shows that cancer, sleep disorders, heart disease, and what really sticks out is asthma in children, which was 30% to 70% higher than the norm for people who all prevalent to people living close to tracks, especially freight tracks. This study shows the effects of nocturnal noise on sleep and cardiovascular function, which there are many studies on this subject, and they all paint a bleak picture. I think a train whistle is 140 decibels to 152, which is, a jet airplane is 1/30, to give you an idea. This study shows how noise pollution takes huge toll on health and happiness. This is a really interesting read, I'm going to leave it for you, you might find it really interesting to read just for a lot of reasons. So those are all studies on people living near tracks, and so between the tracks and the proposed McBrydson's houses is the Manor Chemical Company, which is a company that deals in chemicals right on the location. Right here is a list of all, this is from their website, all the chemicals they deal with. I'm not a chemist, but you could just look at it, hexane, tulene, ethyl glycol, antifreeze. There are just so many, obviously carcinogenic chemicals in here, that it's pretty shocking, really, and this is from their website, too. I'll leave this for you also. The more I look into this product, the more shocked I am that anyone would even consider building houses in this location. I don't expect most builders to be concerned about these kinds of problems, as money makes, making money almost always is number one priority. But I would hope that the local government, as a voice of the people, would take all of this very seriously. Please do not rezone the green space from sports commercial to housing. Thank you. And I'll leave all this for you over here, if you want a glass. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Paul Huieman. Can you hand that to me, sir?
My name is Paul Huieman. I live at 7905 New Hampshire Avenue. Thank you for hearing me today and giving me your time. As the council women and men move forward with what seems to be an inevitable vote on rezoning the property at 6727 Higgy Road, where the business known as Tower T is located, could you ask yourself, where is the gazebo? Where is the town square? What place do St. Louis countyans go for their Mecca? A constant state of rezoning and removing what is old and no good doesn't always work. We should treasure more of our roots. Many of the smaller municipalities suffer from identity crisis, and Afton is not different. If you listen to the people talking and speaking out, the ones like myself asking you not to rezone, if you hear how they identify with Tower T, it is a staple of our community. I know that we can't make someone sign a lease. I ask you to consider any and all options. Please hear the citizens of the area, let's find a way to make this work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jenny Huieman.
Hi, thank you for being here and listening. My name's Jenny Huieman, and I live at 7905 New Hampshire Avenue. I was wanting to see if I could pass out a picture to the council.
Bring that to me, ma'am.
In talking about the beauty of Tower T, not only is it a place for families to gather and play golf and hit balls at the batting cages, it's also a beautiful piece of land. And I'm passing out a photo, so that is right out my backyard. We moved to this house a year ago because of the land behind us. It's absolutely beautiful. There are, there's many wildlife, deer, turkey, fox, ducks, to name a few. I don't know where they'll all go if they build this development. Their green spaces are a great benefit to our environment. They filter pollutants and dust from the air. They provide shade and lower temperatures, and they reduce erosion of soil into our waterways, to name a few. I'm concerned about the retention pond. When you look at the map, there's going to be a retention pond right in our backyard. Being a professional real estate agent, from that standpoint of view, this is an issue. They are placed in the lowest point of the community where the water will drain, moisture, whether standing or not, will bring critters, unmanaged vegetation, high concentrates of fertilizers and pesticides runoff, and persistently wet ground. Whether future buyers look at a home, when my future buyers are looking at a home and they see a retention pond near, I hear negative comments such as snakes, mosquitoes, mold, moisture. Data is quite clear on the negative impact to both value and marketability, and that is a fact. I'm also concerned about sewer lines and runoff. We moved recently from near Gravois Creek, where they developed the music road area with new homes, and the reason we moved is because of the sewer issues. And I feel like this would create the same issue with, if they build all these homes, you're going to have sewer lines overloaded and cause sewer backups and flooding. There are other issues to consider: Traffic on Higgy, overcrowded schools, tax increases to the elderly that are on fixed incomes. Please consider keeping the space green, it will be better for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Walter Henkel. I live at 6621 Ee Road, right on the corner in New Hampshire and Ee, next to a Union Electric Substation. My house also happens to be extremely close to the road, which has me worried about the fact that if this proposal goes through, you're putting all those houses in there, bringing more automobiles on a heavily loaded road already, and if you widen Higgy Road, I could very well be thrown out on the street. And I've been in that house 45 years, and I don't want to go. I'm 76 years old, I think the best thing to do is carry me out of there, and that's my primary objection. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ben Brady.
I'm Ben Brady, 9048 Kathleen in Afton, lifelong Afton resident, and let me start off by saying I absolutely love Tower T. I would love nothing more than to keep it in its current incarnation. I'm also a CPA, I have an MBA in finance, I'm a numbers guy, and when a business owner takes a look at his business and says, "Due to the cost of the underlying asset that I would have to buy, I do not have a viable business," the owner, whose family ran it for 60 years, knows it better than anybody, says his business isn't viable. What choice do we have but to listen to him? Right? There seems to be three constants in Afton, and I really am not saying this in jest, it's that all change is bad, that anything that puts even one more car on the road must be vigorously opposed, and that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Okay? I've lived in Afton my entire life, come Thursday, it'll be 10 years as a homeowner myself, and I want nothing more than to stay in Afton. But if we keep turning down every single opportunity for change and for progress in this community, what choice do we have to stay? When my wife and I want to go out and be entertained, want to go out and get a drink, go out and have a meal, we generally don't stay in Afton to do it. We do it sometimes, but we go to Kirkwood, we go to Webster Groves, we go to Creve Court, we go to St. Anne, places with services that we want. These places all have traffic, mind you. They have traffic because they're places that offer services that people want. There's not a lot of traffic in Afton. I would love nothing more than to have a reason to stay, than to have an opportunity for Afton to transform in the future, to have more businesses come in, to be a great place to raise families, to bring more families in to Afton. And I guess that's it. I ask you, give me and people like me a reason to stay, give Afton a chance to grow for the future. The time to dig a well is not when you're thirsty. Think of Afton 10 years from now, the opportunities we could have, and absent a viable, ready-to-go alternative, I would not like to see Tower T sit vacant or turn into an industrial park for 10 years, like so many other vacant places in the Gravois Corridor. Go ahead and approve this rezoning absent a viable alternative. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Chris Green.
Chris Green, 8309 Vassal, 63123. I'm here to reiterate that the citizens of Afton do not want Tower T rezoned into residential. I don't think I'm naive enough to believe that Tower T can exist as it does today after it closes. However, there are many, many other options that I think that we could see beneficial to the citizens of Afton. And so just to keep it short and sweet, I'd like to say, please do not rezone for residential. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Faisal Khan, Director of the St. Louis County Department of Public Health. I just wanted to take a few minutes to clarify an item that I noticed on the council's add-on agenda pertaining to a pharmaceutical, wholesale pharmaceutical distributor that we often use called Morris Dixon. Apparently, there's some miscommunication about the DEA or the Justice Department apparently suspending their registration. That is not the case. The DEA did act and suspend their distribution license based on some reports on the 4th of May. On the 5th of May, a court overturned that decision, and on the 18th of May last month, the DEA and the Justice Department formally dropped all complaints and restored their license fully. Just to clarify, Morris Dixon is not a pharmaceutical products company, they're a wholesale distributor. St. Louis County does not have a contract with Morris Dixon. We are part of a large purchasing group called the Minnesota Multi-State Cooperative Alliance. This is specific to government entities, and it allows us to improve our ability to get decent wholesale drug prices when we go out and buy pharmaceutical products, both drugs and medical products. It is a fact that medical prices can change daily. This is the most cost-efficient manner for us to procure these medications. In just looking through last year's requisitions, we purchased travel vaccines, other clinical meds for hypertension, diabetes, rabies immunoglobulin, 340B Title X medications, as well as STD treatment medications from this vendor. I can confirm for the council conclusively that we have never purchased any controlled substances from them. And I'm sure it will be obvious to the council that eliminating a major pharmaceutical company from our purchasing group options would surely increase our costs and decrease our access to products that we need every single day as we serve the people of St. Louis County. Furthermore, having to contract with 15 different companies as opposed to operating through a purchasing group and one vendor would be a nightmare to manage and keep the costs down. Thank you.
Dr. Khan, you realize, of course, we're not asking to terminate our relationship, we're asking to examine the very public accusations of excess sales and distribution of controlled substances without reporting them to the DEA.
Absolutely, sir.
Or just investigating that complaint and taking no position on the merits of that complaint or the current relationship with St. Louis County.
The complaint was debunked completely, sir.
I understand that. I saw there was a follow-up hearing, and what I read, there was that there would be a hearing in June, but if that hearing is passed, I do appreciate the information, and that will help us more promptly conclude that piece of our work.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Catherine Dopri.
Catherine Dopri, here on behalf of the Open Space Council at 3115 South Grant. Thank you guys for having me tonight. I just wanted to speak to you tonight in favor of the legislation that you guys have in your add-on packet. As you may Um, as you may remember, many of you, I have spoken probably for seven years now in front of the county council, both under the Dooley and the Stanger administration, about my concerns over the misuse and potential sale threats to parkland. Um, I'm sure you remember that I work for the Open Space Council, which is a local nonprofit that represents a wide-ranging group of citizens on both sides of the aisle who love their local parks. And I'm also a member of the Creve Court Park Coalition, uh, which was a organic grassroots group that formed in response to recent developments in Creve Court Park, somewhat recent. Um, I wanted to speak in favor of the proposed park protection legislation. Um, I believe that it provides important increased transparency and peace of mind to county residents and to park users who continue to have legitimate concerns over the misuse and threats to publicly owned green spaces. Those green spaces were promised to these individuals as public parks. I've watched as threats to sell, transfer, and dispose of parkland have been debated under both the Dooley and the Stanger administration, and portions of parks have been misused without the knowledge or support of the public. I'm sure that all of you remember watching hundreds of citizens who spoke to protect Creve Court Park from the recent development, and many of you recall the multiple times that this chamber was filled beyond capacity to protest the disposal and sale, um, or the proposed disposal and sale of Lone Elk Park and many others under the previous administration. This last year's protest, I believe, provide an excellent opportunity for our elected officials to respond to the public's desire to, to protect St. Louis County parks for the next generation. I believe that Queenie Park, Cliff Cave Park, Spanish Lake Park, Creve Court Lake Park, and the sixty-seven other parks are incredible regional assets. People love these parks. They take their children there to hike, to bike. They provide important ecosystem benefits to our region, and they're an important part of our historical and cultural history. St. Louisans want to see them protected and to be used for park purposes, and that's why I'm here tonight, asking you to consider supporting the legislation for this charter amendment that would prohibit parkland from being sold, leased, or given away without the approval of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Just so everyone understands, this is a charter amendment that will be considered by the council for the November ballot. It is too late to consider anything for the August ballot, and I anticipate some conversation over the next month as we work through the details. Next speaker.
Final speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, it was surprising to see Councilman Dolan appear at a public hearing on Friday night for the big development proposed at Olive and One Seventy in University City. The councilman supports it. If Councilman Dolan is for it, that means County Executive Stanger must also support it. The development would require the destruction of sixty-seven homes, fifty-eight apartments, two churches, one school, and buildings containing dozens of businesses. Also, a Costco and some other businesses can be built on the site. It was just the other day when the county executive announced his initiative on affordable housing. Yet this development would destroy sixty-seven modest homes after the residents are kicked out. What has caused so much controversy is it is largely an African-American neighborhood, and many of the small businesses are owned by immigrants who have built up a thriving part of the city. They feel they are being targeted by the city. The entire project would cost nearly two-hundred million dollars, and the developer wants a seventy-million-dollar TIF subsidy. It will require approval of the twelve-person University City TIF Commission. What's interesting is who's on the commission. Half are in St. Louis County government, and three of those work in the county executive's office: Glenn Powers, Tom Curran, and Tom Malicek. On another subject, there are some big changes coming to the Metro Transit Agency as John Nations is leaving, which is no loss. He should have never been appointed to the job to begin with. What is a loss is that Ray Frame, the number-two person at Metro, is also leaving. He is the polar opposite of John Nations. He is a real transit guy who is hardworking and honest. He should have been given the top job before. Council continues to neglect what's going on at Metro despite approving hundreds of millions of dollars for the transit agency. The county executive has suggested new commissioners for by-state. One is Michael Yates, who is on the board of the Crupse Sewer District. It would be difficult to imagine a worse choice. This provides even more reason why the council needs to keep an eye on Metro. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Um, this concludes the public forum. Let's proceed with the introduction of bills.
Bill number one forty-six, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to twelve thousand dollars from the St. Louis Regional Arts Commission, appropriating the same for support of the Voices of Youth Program of the Department of Human Services, authorizing execution of related documents. Bill number one forty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance reversing, revising the St. Louis County R2O road system under Chapter eleven-oh-five, Title eleven, St. Louis County, revised ordinance since nineteen-seventy-four, is amended by deleting therefrom portions of three roadways located within the city of Valley Park. Bill number one forty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Lindbergh School District for reimbursement of costs incurred by St. Louis County in constructing a pedestrian signal and sidewalk connection at Music Avenue near Dressel Elementary School, appropriating three-hundred thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Federal Aid Urban Trust Fund for support of the project. Bill number one forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with CDG Engineers Incorporated for engineering services in connection with improvements along Jennings Station Road and Lucasant Road, AR-dash-sixteen-oh-four and AR-dash-fifteen-sixty. Bill number one fifty, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance establishing a section of the right-of-way of Majestic Boulevard as part of the county road system. Bill number one fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance approving acceptance of donation of nine thousand forty-one dollars from Mid-America Transplant, appropriating same for expansion of the Moore Cooler capacity in the Medical Examiner's Office. Bill number one fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Standard Insurance Company for administration of employee long-term and short-term disability programs. Bill number one fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax increment revenue notes, Fenton Logistics Park Redevelopment Project, new state revenues, and tax increment revenue notes, Fenton Logistics Park's Redevelopment Project, local tax increment financing revenues of St. Louis County, Missouri, to provide funds to finance certain redevelopment project costs and approving certain actions in connection with the issuance of the notes. Bill number one fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries to the R2 Residence District and the C8 Planned Commercial District and approving the application of preliminary plans as amended for the development in C8 Planned Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, PC twelve-dash-eighteen, Oakville Mo Medical LLC. Bill number one fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County on the sixth day of November two thousand and eighteen for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of said county a proposition to amend the provisions of the St. Louis County Charter pertaining to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by-
Before we proceed to, uh, with perfection, I'd ask that we suspend the rules to, to advance Bill number one fifty-four to the perfection order of business. It's on for introduction tonight.
So you're making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, sir.
Second.
There's a motion to suspend the rules to introduce, which bill number is that, Attorney?
One fifty-four.
To introduce Bill number one fifty-four to the perfection calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
I think in case, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the club to read, uh, Bill number one fifty-four, please.
Yes, sir. Bill number one fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. That's all we need to read.
All right, then I'll move to perfect Bill number one fifty-four.
Second.
Um, all in favor of perfection of Bill number one fifty-four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one fifty-four is, um, is perfected. You'll have to record me as an abstention on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Bill number one sixteen.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Wassinger, and Page.
I move to perfect Bill number one sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one sixteen is perfected.
Bill number one thirty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to hold. Uh, Bill number one thirty-three, and Bill one thirty-three will be held.
Bill number one thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. Hold on the order of business, please.
One thirty-six will be held.
Bill number one thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I'll move to, um, perfect Bill number one thirty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one thirty-eight is perfected.
Bill number one thirty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, move to hold. Bill number one thirty-nine at, uh, request of AT&amp;T as they work on a substitute that complies with recent changes in state law. Uh, Bill one thirty-nine will be held.
Bill number one forty, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Uh, move to hold. Bill number one forty for the same reason, and one forty will be held.
Bill number one forty-one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number one forty-one, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one forty-one is perfected.
Bill number one forty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number one forty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one forty-two is perfected.
Bill number one forty-three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to hold Bill number one forty-three.
Uh, Bill number one forty-three will be held.
Bill number one forty-four, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Move to perfect Bill number one forty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one forty-four is perfected.
Bill number one forty-five, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Erby.
I move to perfect Bill number one forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries Bill number one forty-five is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number three oh five, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold three oh five.
Uh, Bill number three oh five will be held.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, move to hold Bill number three fifty-three, and three fifty-three is held.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number ninety-nine, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of substitute Bill number two for Bill number ninety-nine. Before we vote, though, I would like to, uh, make a comment if it's right with the Chair. Thank you. Uh, this bill is, um, authorizing the county executive contract for design services for two new police stations, one in North County and one in South County. Everybody on this panel, I think I can speak for everyone, understands the importance and the need of these stations. That's why I'm moving to, uh, pass this bill tonight. That said, serious questions remain with respect to the acquisition of the property in South County for the police station, and, um, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this council will continue to, um, conduct its oversight and its due diligence, looking into that transaction and making sure that, um, the best price was obtained to purchase the property, um, as well as the reasons, uh, to whom it may be sold, and other aspects with the, regarding the acquisition. All that said, I move to, uh, finally pass substitute Bill number two for Bill number ninety-nine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Final passage. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Uh, before I vote to, uh, for this, uh, yes, I, I do think that we should have these new facilities, especially in South County, if, um, the councilman believes so that's his district. However, um, I didn't vote, if anyone recalls, when we, um, I believe voted to appropriate the money initially. Um, there were serious issues within the African-American community and the police department. In the police department, they're having a lot of issues with their African-American officers, and then we, as we know, there's been some, some, uh, contention with the, uh, community. So I wasn't going to support putting money into buildings when we're still working on training. I have not heard from the chief about any new training that has taken place since January, and I've asked for that. Again, I'll go ahead and vote for this because the police officers want to, I support our police officers and our law enforcement, but they, but we have to also in turn support our community. So I just needed to say that, um, and I will go ahead and vote. Aye. Aye. Bill A Y E.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on substitute Bill number two for Bill number ninety-nine, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number ninety-nine is finally passed.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number one eleven, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move for final passage of substitute Bill number one for Bill number one eleven.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on substitute Bill number one for Bill number one eleven, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill number one for Bill number one eleven is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-three, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one twenty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one twenty-three is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one twenty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one twenty-four is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one twenty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one twenty-five is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-six, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-six, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one twenty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one twenty-six is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one twenty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one twenty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number one twenty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number one twenty-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 128, there are seven ayes.
Move for final passage of Bill number 128.
Bill number 129 introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number 129.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 129, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 129 is finally passed.
Bill number 130 introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 130.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 130, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 130 is finally passed.
Bill number 131 introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill number 131.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 131, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 131 is finally passed.
Bill number 132 introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 132.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 132, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 132 is finally passed.
Bill number 134 introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill number 134.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 134, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number 134 is finally passed.
Bill number 135 introduced by Councilmember Erby?
I move for final passage of Bill number 135.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Which bill was that?
135.
Oh, aye. Sorry.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 135, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 135 is finally passed.
Bill number 137 introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number 137.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
Because I guess the county council would, is this, I mean, according to the charter, is this even legal to, or do we, how's it explained in the charter as far as unexpired terms?
They, it's dealt with on 11.060.
I appreciate the dialogue and I'll allow it, but I respectfully disagree with the legal interpretation that's been offered to us. Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Well, that's the answer is it's addressed in Article 11, Section 060.
Okay. Well, first advice that's been given to me through by asking about this, I vote no because I don't think we have the authority to do this, but that's, no, it's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number 137, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill 1, number 137 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, there is created a task force on opioid crisis. The task force shall consist of seven to 11 members. Each council member shall appoint one member to the task force and the county executive may appoint four members. The task force shall be responsible for making recommendations to the county council and the county executive on the following. One, expand education and prevention programs. Two, improve regional coordination of treatment services. Three, expand medication-assisted therapies. Four, enhance and approve shared intelligence, including use of the prescription drug monitoring program by providers and the availability of community-based treatment services. Five, reduce community reservoir of opioid supply. Six, request supplemental appropriation of $1 million in the 2018 budget to fund potential solutions recommended by the task force for prevention and treatment of opioid addiction. Eight, investigate Morrison Dixon, a county contractor who is under investigation by the DEA for underreporting excessive opioid sales and distribution. The task force needs to review the service, services M&amp;D is providing, if it is supplying opioids to the county and/or if we want to do business with a company that is potentially careless in either its distribution or reporting of opioids.
Anyone else wants to co-sponsor this, please alert the clerk.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chair. Are we, are you going to leave seven in there being so they just-
Well, the action in seven is to investigate and a large part of that was done for us by the director of the Department of Health and if it's determined that the charges are by the DEA, very serious charges by the DEA of this distributor have been resolved, then that piece, item number seven of this resolution will be addressed.
Just to reiterate, Mr. Chair, I'd ask that the clerk note that I asked to co-sponsor this measure.
It's in the packet.
They were distributed after, later in the day. Seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in favor of obviously anything we can do to stop the epidemic, so after that, co-sponsor.
This council has made several strong statements over the past two years regarding this issue. Roll call.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, so I have heard that in addition to yourself and Councilmember Harder, that Councilmember Dolan would co-sponsor. Are there any other co-sponsors?
Me and me. You and me as well, John.
Everybody.
And Erby and-
Everyone.
Okay.
Looks like everyone.
So all seven council members are co-sponsoring?
I think we can predict how this will go.
Okay. Just read it once more. Introduced by councilmembers Page, Harder, Dolan, Wassinger, Erby, Walton Gray, and Tracus.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I would like to say just a minute on this is that this is an issue that's very near and dear to me and I've been preaching about this for a long time in my community in the West County area. We've held many town hall meetings in the Parkway School District and I think this is something we can't push under the rug anymore and so Councilman Page and I and others have decided that this is time to act and it's time for leadership and we hope that this task force will give us some really good answers and some good ideas that we can help the whole community and maybe even the whole region. And we encourage anyone that has some, some interest in being on this task force to contact your individual council people, as you see in this legislation or this resolution, that each council person will appoint one person to this and the county executive has the ability to appoint four. So if you have some very strong interest or background in this issue, I'd please come forward and, and give us your names and, and maybe we'll consider you for one of these appointments, but either way, it's a strong statement to the community that it's time to, to take control of this. So thank you for everyone supporting this and I vote aye.
Mr. Chair, before I announce the vote count, neither the deputy clerk nor I heard who seconded the motion to adopt the resolution.
I did.
Thank you.